To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We just had some meeting.
Good, great, excellent.
How you doing? Good. Thank you everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alright, so the meeting has been opened and...
I, uh...
And they're ready to go. Okay. We are to hear from our Transportation Department.
Yes.
On the Yarmouth Road Corridor Study.
Good, excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to make you aware that on the agenda it does say the Cape Cod Rail Trail Presentation from Glenn Cannon. I am doing a Yarmouth Road Corridor Study, of which a multi-use path which will eventually connect to the Cape Cod Rail Trail is proposed. These are just the concept plans over today. And then there is our, this is a paper copy of our online questionnaire that you've given me. You probably do have this. Okay. And we would prefer to do, fill out the questionnaire online to save us the trouble of going through the paper. My name is Glenn Cannon, Transportation Engineer at Cape Cod Commission, and like I say, I intend today to talk about the Yarmouth Road Corridor Study, which is a study that we're beginning this spring to address the traffic concerns along Yarmouth Road, particularly coming out of the Hyannis Access Study. We were directed by the Executive Office of Transportation to perform a study of Yarmouth Road. They had done a study of the Airport Rotary Hyannis Center, if you will, and Yarmouth Road really was within their scope, so they had asked us to address it. And for today's agenda, I will go over the study area, the task force, review the project. I'll show you the alternatives that I have presented to you, the public input which we're always looking for. And then I'll outline the next steps. We have made a milestone in this project.
It was great.
Uh, yeah. For me, it's been great. As far as the rest of the year goes, it is the entire length of Yarmouth Road, beginning in the town of Yarmouth, off of Willow Street with that four-lane cross-section ends. The town constructed that two or three years ago now. We're going all the way down through Route 28 and down to Main Street. We're not forgetting that small section of Yarmouth Road south of Route 28. And also in here, we've also highlighted the Hyannis Transportation Center, which are multi-use paths. You'll see in all my concepts, there is a multi-use path in every concept, and it connects with the Hyannis Transportation Center up to Exit 7, where there is a plan, I'll get to that too, there's a plan to bring it over to Exit 7. Our task force, we have quite an extensive task force. I believe we have 30 members on the task force, and we have public information planning organizations, Cape Cod Commission, Town of Barnstable, Yarmouth, Commonwealth Mass Highway, Executive Office of Transportation, including the Barnstable Municipal Airport, the Steamship Authority, and the Cape Cod Hospital. They're all major players in this area, which the Yarmouth Road provides access to those very important entities. Our purpose and need, there is the economic development of the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, which is approved oh, three years ago now. You know, that, that growth incentive zone, even though, you know, we're not looking at regulating developments within the growth incentive zone, the Cape Cod Commission, we are looking to provide access to Route 6 from that growth incentive zone out to the highway, an easy access for them. And again, it is also the gateway to downtown Hyannis, very important for us, the access to the hospital, referring to the airports, those are very important entities for us. The scope of our study, I think it's a good scope for the study, because we have made components of transportation within this one corridor study. You know, we have rail, a bus component, automobiles, bicycles, and then of course the emergency responders, which are important to us. We've heard a lot of discussion about emergency responders and the trouble they're having on Yarmouth Road getting down to the hospital. I did mention just earlier that this did come out of the Executive Office of Transportation with reason for this study. They had done their Hyannis Access Study, of which Yarmouth Road is not part of their scope, so they pushed that onto us to conduct that. What else did they do? They did look at Route 28 and Yarmouth Road, and these are their concept plans for the Route 28 Yarmouth Road reconfiguration. And I call this one the Westley Configuration, and if you look at the lane configuration that they have here on Yarmouth Road, two lanes northbound and three lanes southbound on Yarmouth Road here at the intersection. That's a left dedicated to left, a dedicated to right, and then two lanes on Route 28, I call it westbound, technically bound. And that's a four-lane cross-section there on Route 28 eastbound, which is two, a dual left-turn lane, a through lane, dedicated to lane, and then a through-right lane on Route 28. Down here on Yarmouth Road, what they've done too, is we've heard a lot of discussion about this intersection, the Yarmouth Road Camp Street intersection, it's a real problem if you've ever been out there, and for a low volume intersection, it's a real problem. They've made that one, that small section of Yarmouth Road one-way, and they'll bring the northbound lane into here into Camp Street, and then they've expanded Camp Street for a dedicated left, a dedicated through lane, and then a through-right lane on Route 28. East of the intersection, it's two lanes, again eastbound, I think technically southbound, and then two lanes westbound. And that's their, let's say their Westley Configuration, and really what they did is they held this easterly property line, they put all the widening to the west side of the intersection, and that goes right to the Cam Appliance Building. Their easterly configuration, it's the same lane configuration of Route 28 Yarmouth intersection, but the, all the widening, it's the east of the intersection, they hold that westley property line, so that'd be going right to the Hess Gas Station. And in all of our concept plans, we've used these concepts that they've developed in their study, and we built on top of these for Yarmouth Road. Again, I did talk about the multi-use path, where we're charged with bringing that multi-use path from Exit 7 down to the Hyannis Transportation Center. There is currently a plan by the town of Yarmouth and Dennis to extend the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and I think this is where the confusion came with the agenda. So the town of Dennis and Yarmouth, they're going to extend their Cape Cod Rail Trail to where it stops right now on Route 134, they're going to bring it all the way over to Exit 7, and then we're charged for bringing it down to the Hyannis Transportation Center. And like I say, you'll see that in all, every, every concept that you see today. There is a component of the Cape Cod Railroad. Yarmouth Road Corridor Study, I think, I think Bill, you alluded to this, it's very difficult to get people to, to come to the planning stages of transportation corridor studies, and then once you have construction or you, you start putting out the survey stakes, everybody comes out to talk to you about it, and they're all complaining about it. So instead of us inviting as many people as we possibly could, which we've always tried to do, we've tried to go to them. And, and I think with these numbers of meetings, you see, I tried to reach out to almost any group I could find that had any interest in this roadway whatsoever. And I think that's the way you do it. Because even with this, you know, when we have our public informational meetings, well we've had three of them now, you know, you still get people who are new to the project, still don't understand what we're trying to do, and you still have to go back to step, you know, square one with them. But, but they're very few right now. I think by reaching out to so many people, you cut down on that kind of information element more. Like I said, we really tried to step out there, we talked to everybody we possibly could on this project. This is in mid-September, we're, right now in October, where we've really done, we've, we have our final alternatives, I kind of call it the end of the design charrette. Up to this point, we've gone out and talked to groups and listened to all the ideas that they had about any roadway configuration they could think of. We put it down on paper, we've shown those alternatives, and then we're moving forward with those now. Again, we hope to have a draft report out this fall, and then finalize it by early winter. Those are our alternatives. Our alternatives, we have 12 alternatives right now. They do break down into kind of three categories, Concept Plan 1A, 1B, 7 and 8, all talk about widening of Yarmouth Road itself. And I'll start with 1A here. Right, yeah, right now, we're beginning at the Yarmouth Road, I mean the Willow Street Extension in Yarmouth, where that four-lane cross-section exists today, and bringing that four-lane cross-section all the way down to Route 28 in the section of Yarmouth Road. So that'd be a four-lane cross-section there. For 1A, we've kept all the widening on the west side of Yarmouth Road, and that would impact all the businesses on the west side of Yarmouth Road there. When you see that lane configuration down to the bottom, then Route 28 Yarmouth Road, the red lines, that is the lane configuration coming out of the Hyannis Access Study. For 1B, the only difference we had, we used the easterly configuration at the Route 28 Yarmouth Road, and then we took that four, four-lane cross-section, brought it up on the east side, and that impacts, let's say, the businesses on the east side of Yarmouth Road. And also along with this concept, there are residential properties, there are more residential properties, I should say, on the northern part of Yarmouth Road in the town of Barnstable, which this concept would impact those residential properties. And we've stated from the beginning that we're trying to stay away from those impacts. That's why I don't believe this concept will, will have too many legs when we move forward right now. This is our cross-section for Yarmouth Road with those 12 alternatives. Putting a sidewalk on the east side of paved shoulder, two travelings northbound, a raised median, two travelings southbound, paved shoulder. Again, a replanted area, and then a multi-use path right next to the roadway. That's one thing that the Concepts 1A, 1B, and Concept 8, that multi-use path could be next to the roadway, because you, when you impact those businesses, you'll have, if those businesses were acquired, you'd have the property available to put that multi-use path along the road. As far as Concepts 2A, 2B, and 2C, they all use this concept of one-way loop here on Yarmouth Road, Old Yarmouth Road and Rosary Lane. So those three concepts all use that same, same one-way loop. Again, we'd start up in Yarmouth at Willow Street, bring that four-lane cross-section all the way down to Rosary Lane, and then from Rosary Lane, Yarmouth Road would be two lanes, one-way, southbound, again down to that Route 28 Yarmouth Road, Westley Configuration. And then for the northbound, at Old Yarmouth Road, the two lanes northbound was Old Yarmouth Road to Rosary Lane, back into, into Yarmouth Road. There would be, you know, there, with this project, this one again, 2B, it's just the easterly configuration at Route 28 Yarmouth Road, so instead of impacting the Cam Appliance City, it'd be impacted the Hess Gas Station. You know, we have the four-lane cross-section beginning in Yarmouth, coming down to Rosary Lane. From Rosary Lane, Yarmouth Road would be two lanes, southbound, down to the intersection. Again, the northbound lanes are both on Old Yarmouth Road and then to Rosary Lane. And then on 2C, at one of our public informational meetings, a gentleman mentioned to us that these are undeveloped lots within here, just east of the Hess Gas Station, and that we'd be able to put a roadway within those lots, and then connect up to Old Yarmouth Road. He was correct about that. That would reduce the impacts at the intersection. The only preliminary discussions I've had with the Hyannis Water Department, their wells are located up in this area, and they are very much opposed to that new roadway being close to their wells. So again, I think when we get into refining these alternatives, you may find that this one drops out for that, for that reason. One good thing about these three concepts is the, the new roadway within Old Yarmouth Road and Rosary Lane, it would fit within the Brighter Way, so there wouldn't be any, any off-site impacts to the adjacent businesses. There'd be a sidewalk, the paved shoulder, you know, two lanes northbound, paved shoulder, sidewalk on both sides. And I do say, no impacts outside of the roadway, because we wouldn't be taking properties along that. But we've had a lot of discussions with the Yarmouth Road, I mean since they, Old Yarmouth Road and Rosary Lane business owners, and they were concerned with the amount of new traffic on these new roadways, with the type of businesses that they're operating here. It's very much industrial, they're very much like contracted yards, trucks moving in and out during the day, specifically, but, you know, the trucks backing out from the, from the yards on, using the roadway as the turnaround, so they can pull out. So they're very concerned with increases in significant traffic along those roadways. The Yarmouth Road Cross Section, again, the sidewalk on the east side, paved shoulder, two lanes southbound, paved shoulder, sidewalk, existing businesses stay as they are, the railroad tracks will stay where they are, and then we try to, we look to get some green space and then the multi-use path within the railroad Brighter Way. And hopefully, we're going to have our meeting next week with the Executive Office of Transportation to talk to them about using that land within the railroad Brighter Way. We have had a discussion with Mass Coastal, the Cape Cod Railroad Company, and they were very agreeable to having their multi-use path beside their train. It's worked for them in Falmouth right now, they have a small section of it where they have a separation between the multi-use path and the tracks, and it seemed to be working fine for them, and so they had no objection to it whatsoever. I was very encouraged by that meeting, thought that was a good meeting. Concept Plan 3, 4, 5, 6A, and 6B, all talk about new roadways within either the railroad right-of-way or airport property. So on Concept Plan 3, Yarmouth Road would be converted to two lanes, northbound, connecting again up into the Willow Street, Yarmouth Road, four-lane cross-section, and then coming southbound. That'd be two brand-new lanes within the railroad right-of-way coming southbound, and then connecting up onto Route 28 at Mary Dunway, opposite the engine house. So that'd be two new, two new lanes within the railroad right-of-way. Concept Plan 4, we did hear from the emergency responders, they'd like to have a straight shot coming off of Exit 7, all the way down to Route 28 and then down to Camp Street. So it would be Yarmouth Road, two lanes southbound, so they'd have a straight shot all the way down to the intersection, and then through the intersection out to Camp Street. That would put two lanes northbound in the railroad right-of-way, and the only problem there being is that once you get to the top here, then you have to cross those two lines, you have to either be an overpass or an underpass. I think the cost of that will probably move this one from moving forward in our evaluations. But we did add it in there. These are our cross-sections for Yarmouth Road, the railroad right-of-way. Again, the two lanes, existing two lanes in Yarmouth Road, so there isn't anything widening required on Yarmouth Road, sidewalk, paved shoulder, two lanes either northbound or southbound, paved shoulder, sidewalk, existing businesses stay as they are, the railroad tracks will stay where they are, two new lanes, again, either northbound or southbound, which concept we went with, some green space and then the multi-use path. Concept Plan 5, we've heard also from the public about depressing the rail line along, this was actually Concept 3, we just depressed the rail line that goes underneath Route 28. We've heard a lot of discussion about the impact the rail line has on Route 28 when they put down the gates stopping traffic on Route 28. I, I think from my observations, it doesn't have as significant an impact on Route 28 as people claim, because during the summer months, Route 28 is bumper-to-bumper anyways, that traffic really isn't flowing. I think what does happen though, it also stops the free right movement of Yarmouth Road as they're coming down, excuse me, and that does back up traffic onto Yarmouth Road. I think that's a legitimate concern. Again, the few times I watched the gates come down, and I sat there and watched it, you know, Route 28 traffic was barely moving to begin with. By the time they had the gates down, brought the gates back up, there didn't seem to be any significant change, but it was so bad, it was, it was just bumper-to-bumper gridlock at that point anyways, during the summer months. Cross-sections for, for depressing the rail line, again, you know, this is a concept that we've, we've heard from the public, we, we put it out there. Alright, once you get into the cost of this one, I think, you'll see they won't move forward in the evaluation process. Concept Plan 6A, again, coming from one of our public informational meetings, somebody had mentioned that the airport has plenty of land, and you could put a four-lane roadway within the airport property. So starting up in Yarmouth, at Willow Street, bringing that four-lane cross-section all the way down to Route 28, Mary Dunway. The problem being here, when I talk to the airport folks, is that they have a safety zone at the end of their runway, and they also have a runway protection zone, and this approaches on both of those, so I don't see this concept moving forward with those concerns either. This is our Yarmouth Road Concept for 6A, again, it's, it's a four-lane roadway within the airport right-of-way, paved shoulder, two lanes northbound, paved shoulder, some raised median, small raised median, paved shoulder, two lanes southbound, raised, you know, paved shoulder, green space and then the multi-use path. But again, I don't see this one moving forward, I think it would, it would restrict that air, air runway space, and I don't think they'd allow that at all. This is 6B, which does have some life to it. It is a new roadway within the airport right-of-way, I mean airport property. It's two lanes, one lane in each direction, but the airport was not opposed to this. Again, it doesn't impact their runway, there would need to be an exchange of land between the Barnstable Municipal Airport and the town of Barnstable, but I think that would be doable. It cuts down on the amount of cost and the impacts of the businesses along Yarmouth Road. So again, as we get to our evaluation process, I think this is one that we'll be carrying forward. It does come out opposite property lane here, that would be a signalized intersection, that's somewhat of a drawback to this concept, putting a signalized intersection would be a heavy movement there. So we're going to analyze that, break that down a little bit further, and see how it ranks out. Again, with all these, we have our multi-use path continuing along, this is, this is along with the railroad right-of-way actually, up to Exit 7. Our concepts for Concept 6B, again, the two lanes, one lane in each direction within the airport right-of-way, the business stay where they are, the railroad line stays where it is. That would be, I'm sorry, these would be the two new lanes within the airport right-of-way here, separation and our multi-use path. Concept Plan 7, somebody had mentioned to us that what Yarmouth Road really needed was a third lane, a three-lane cross-section, so we'd have a southbound lane, a center turn lane, and a northbound lane. I think the only thing about this one right here is that those businesses on the west side of Yarmouth Road, they're, they are long and narrow, they, they are squeezed in there quite tightly. If you were to take any amount of space along that, that front edge of Yarmouth Road, I think you would find that, that you, you make the properties unusable, and that at this point, you mustn't take the entirety of the property, or you would be forced to take the entirety of the property, they don't have usable land anymore. So with that, you could, you know, you could put in the four-lane cross-section if you're going to take all that property. So I don't really see this one moving forward right now. Concept Plan 8, I'm sorry, the cross-section, again, sidewalk, paved shoulder, northbound lane, center turn lane, southbound lane, paved shoulder, sidewalk. And this one does show the existing businesses, but again, I think when we break this down a little bit further, you'll see, you know, those, those boxes are real tight. You'd be taking away all the parking lots, I know that. They wouldn't have any usable space left as we were before. Concept Plan 8, somebody had mentioned to us, this is Concept 1A, somebody had mentioned to us, great separation of Route 28 and Yarmouth Road. We did put it in there, we had our guys, I had them do a preliminary check of this. I believe they told me it would take 50 acres of land down to that intersection, put great separation in there. Yeah. So again, I think when we get into the evaluation process, you'll see that this one will drop out quite quickly. Those are significant impacts down there between Yarmouth Road. Sorry, just don't see that moving forward. Again, that's our, our concept for 1A, 1B, and Concept 8, same as 1A, 1B. Those are, listen, my presentation, I'll, I will tell you the next step. Right now, again, we are done with what I call our design charrette, we've listened to the public, we've brought every idea that we've heard out for evaluation, and now we're starting to break it down with the task force. We have our task force meetings approximately, at least once, once a month, we try it every two weeks. But we're starting to break down the cost, the impacts, the environmental impacts, you know, the level of service impacts, all that, we're bringing that back to the task force right now. They're going to evaluate it, and then we're going to have another public informational meeting in November at the Barnstable Town Hall, and, and we'll bring forward the, the alternatives that we see to be the most viable, get that public information. And if there are any questions, have any answer questions?
On here, it says question users are on gocapecod.org/yardmouthroad.
Yes.
So if I wanted to put comments in, that's what I would log on to?
Yes.
And, and answer questions and give my opinion on that?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have our, we have a paper copy of the questionnaire. This is the printout version of what's online, but the online is much more exciting.
Oh, I, I would imagine.
For the questionnaire, I think we're taking commentary up until the mid-November, you know, really until we've, we have changed our questionnaire also, just, you know, in the beginning, again, we're trying to get as much input as possible. We were looking for people's concerns along Yarmouth Road, Avenue 28, Yarmouth Road, whether the safety concerns, whether the congestion concerns. We heard from the public on that. We've, we've taken that questionnaire offline now, we've put up the new questionnaire to address the concepts. Which concept do you think will work best? Which one, you know, do you think has the most impacts? So it's a new questionnaire now, but I think it's more appropriate at the stage we're in right now in this planning process. You know, again, we've, we've listened to the public, we have our 12 concepts, I don't really see any new that could come forward right now. We'd listen if it did, we would listen, but we want to start cutting these down, we want to start evaluating, you know, you've got to move the process along. So we've changed our questionnaire again also to reflect that, where we're looking for input on the concepts themselves, not just what do you think is falling so.
Yeah. What is the impact of any on, on this project by the airport rotary as it is, or if there were new designs?
I, I should mention, and I'll go back to it, coming out of the Hyannis Access Study, what they had done is they had come up with concepts for the airport rotary that they want to move forward, and those are starting to move forward. There are also plans at the town of Barnstable for the section of Route 28 from the airport rotary to the town of Yarmouth, actually, Yarmouth Town Line. And now we're trying to like catch up with them. But our hope is that, and this would be a real hope, that all three would go at the same time, and they would all be integrated together. I'm not sure that's going to happen due to financial constraints. As you can imagine, you know, that's going to be a very expensive project. So right now, the, the airport rotary project is trying to move forward into design and then into construction, and that will probably be like a phase, you know, phase one. This plan, as it's laid out, would flow smoothly into that plan, but, you know, we also need to talk about that section of Route 28, and say, between the airport rotary, certainly between, and in this project, if not all the way to the Yarmouth Town Line. Route 28 Yarmouth Road, that intersection also, you know, definitely needs to move forward, and then this corridor study needs to move forward also. So we are planning, you know, one integrated project, but I think they are going to come in phases, it's going to happen.
Go ahead.
Well, this addresses the, the access issues with regard to that particular roadway. One of the related issues has been conversation about so-called Exit 6 and 1/2. If I recall, I remember on the Saturday, Cape Cod Commission, this particular study was supposed, was presented as being an alternative to 6 and 1/2. Is it still being looked at in that way?
Well, when they came out with the Hyannis Access Study, they did encompass all the Hyannis, including this, the Exit 6 and 1/2. And what they had determined at that time, they took an approach of working from Hyannis out, as opposed to coming from 6 and 1/2 inward, and they came up with the concept, they wanted to make sure they addressed the airport rotary first, the section of Route 28, let's say, between the airport rotary and Yarmouth Road, Yarmouth Road to Route 28 intersection, and then the Yarmouth Road corridor. So they were working their way out. They didn't eliminate Exit 6 and 1/2, but they thought that these projects need to move forward before Exit 6 and 1/2 moved forward.
Do you have a follow-up? This is on the access, there's been significant improvement on the access from Exit 6.
Yes.
For the turning lane.
Yes.
And I believe that part of, of improvement was to provide a direct access to Attix Lane to the airport, I think that was the intention of extending that road. Is that, you know, again, we're looking at easy ways to get into the business center of Cape Cod.
Right.
And also to the airport.
Yeah.
What effect will, you know, this isn't intended to be an alternative route to the airport, right?
No, this is not intended to be an alternative route to the airport, and I don't believe that would happen in any case. But I think what this project has the potential to do, and again, as we go through the alternatives, we'll get close to this determination. But I think if, if a concept like 1A went forward on Yarmouth Road, you could see a duplication of the Exit 6 traffic flow, where I think you see smooth traffic flow before it was gridlocked. You know, you'd probably have that smooth traffic flow from Exit 7 all the way down through, past Route 28, you know, into Hyannis Center. So I think you could see a duplication of that type of program, but not an alternative there, airport access.
The Hyannis Business Improvement District, have they taken position in this?
They haven't taken a position, and we've asked people not to take a position at, at this point, because again, we really, we want to hear from everybody, and you always want an open slate, and that's how all planning processes should go. We never want anyone to come forward with their preferred concept right in the beginning, because we don't want to stifle people's ideas. And, and I think we've done that, I think we've been very successful in that. But now's the time where we want to say we have enough alternatives, we need to start finding these alternatives. So we're going to, you know, again, we're going to the task force first, I think that's appropriate, and they've been with the project since the beginning. Let them have their say, well, with, with, the task force brings forward, with staff brings forward also, and then everybody will have their turn at it. And, you know, who knows? We may have another We may have another round of meetings that you'll see. Because once you get a preferred alternative, that's when people do start voicing their opinions.
And if I counted right, you have already done about 15 meetings with the public? If I counted all those dates?
Yeah, at least.
Yes, at least. Okay, and this is at least 16 of them.
Yeah, at least number 16, yes.
So.
I have actually two questions, Glenn. It seems like on all your cross-sections, the multi-use trail is on the west, which means you've got to get across Willow Street. How have they dealt with that, or?
You know, that's been an issue that we've been playing with the entire time. Our last discussion that we had with the task force was that they really didn't want to bring it to the east side because of the number of driveways that are on the east side of Yamath Road. They really want it to be one smooth path. But we're still, I'll tell you right now, we're still wrestling with that issue. We're also very concerned, people have raised the point, that the multi-use path, if you put it between the railroad track, you know, multi-use path, and then the airport property, it almost has a feel of an industrial site. Yeah, and where people have mentioned that they may be afraid to use that at night. So that's something else that we're really, we're still wrestling with. Now, one thing about the Concept 5, where to depress the rail line with that one, you can pick your spots where you would have the access to that multi-use path. But again, I think the cost of that is just prohibitive, where it's not going to move forward, but then you'd be able to open it up. Because one of the problems being is, you know, your population's in the east, your multi-use path is to the west.
Right.
It's a natural conflict that we're still trying to get over.
And then my, just my other question, where is this in the tip? Is it?
No, right now it's not in the tip right now. You know, this is still in the planning process. Once this process is done, we come up with a preferred alternative, and then that preferred alternative goes to design and then to construction. But just, you know, we are also having those discussions also with the Executive Office of Transportation, just to make sure we're proactive with it. You never want to have a planning study that just kind of sits out there and does nothing. So we want to move it forward.
Can you get on the tip list?
Well, not right now. Not right now, because we don't have a preferred alternative. Yeah. You can. One thing the Ministry's Highway Department never wants to do, and I don't think it would, they never want to, I'm sorry, what they used to do in the old days, they used to jump to design, and then that would be their public process. People would voice their displeasure with that. And then, you know, you put a lot of money into design, to go backwards, it really hurts. You know, you're really talking about taxpaying dollars. So, you know, you try to do this planning study, you try to do as much outreach as possible, reach consensus, you know, you're never going to make everybody happy.
Right.
But you've got to go for the majority. And then you can really move a project forward that doesn't have the opposition that you see with other projects.
And they don't give you the option of a place holder? Because you're in a design case?
They will not, no, they won't give you, no, they won't give you the place holder, not now, Eric, not now. Once we get into designing, they will give a place holder, and there'll be formalities, but.
However, the NPO, we have suggested that some support be given to the community for design once this public process system has been gotten through. Because this public process is, you know, is the thing that the Transportation Department had asked for, to show that there was support in the community for, you know, for a project, and also for a preferred alternative in terms of, let's say, the concept of the actual design piece, which is the most expensive part of this, is the part where the community needs some support, because the community had been putting, investing in these designs based upon going through this process and time task. And then the Department of Transportation would then decide in their wisdom that they weren't going to go forward with anything, so they'd dump all these projects after the fact that they've gone through.
Yeah. I can tell you one of the things that's very tough about this project too is that Yamath Road itself is town-owned, and that makes the design, the cost of the design, the town's responsibility. And even, you know, property takings of, and things of that nature, that all comes with town's responsibility. That's a huge burden for any town. This is a big project. The Route 28 Yamath Road intersection, that's all state-controlled, that would be a state required, you know, they would be required to do the design there. But again, you know, you're talking about, you know, this entire section of Yamath Road, because it's very expensive for the town. So we will be looking for alternative funding, I'll tell you right now, because I'll tear up, I'll tear up that budget.
When you, when you said that one of those designs like went through the CAM building, or how did the CAM business react to that plan?
Yeah, we've actually invited him because, you see, he's involved in many of the concepts. We invited him onto our task force. He didn't yell at me, he didn't throw things at me, which is a normal response. Yeah, it's good. I think with the business owners, all business owners, they're much more rational than residential homeowners. If you can have a rational discussion about, with them, about relocating their business, there are relocation funds available, there is a process to determine a fair value of a business, and like I said, relocation funds. If you can have that conversation, you can have that conversation with a businessman. He understands that, and if he can at least break even, if not, you know, come out with a better location-wise, he's willing to listen to you. And the gentleman from CAM was very gracious. He didn't, like I said, he didn't throw me out. He's willing to listen. I think that the Yamath Road locations are tough for the existing businesses. Like I say, they're long, thin lots, they really don't have the chance to expand in their current location. I've had business owners tell me that their customers have told them they're afraid to come to their businesses along Yamath Road, and they believe that hinders their business.
Yeah, it's too busy in that corner.
They're just, they're afraid to come in and out, you know, they have to reach out to their businesses. So I think with the businessman, you can have that conversation. We've had those conversations, and we had a Yamath Road business owners meeting. And it was a very productive meeting, a very productive. You know, I think when you get into residential homes, people have emotions. You know, they have their memories of their homes. And again, that's why, you know, for me, you know, from the start, you know, the 1B, I think, you know, we're just, we're really not going to pursue it, because it has an impact to the long-established residential homes along Yamath Road. But the business owners have been very gracious. They really have been. I think there's one other thing I do want to mention, just, you know, with the multi-use path, again, with the, I think the confusion on the agenda, the multi-use path, to my understanding, is going to move forward. There's a lot of momentum for, like I say, the town of Yamath and Dennis, I'm moving the Cape Cod rail trail extension over to Exit 7. I think that no matter what happens, you're going to see that multi-use path move forward, whether, now, it's going to happen in this case, whether any of these concerts move forward or not. That project has a lot of leg to it, has a lot of desirability for people, you know, connects the Cape Cod rail trail to the Hyannis Transportation Center. You actually could be, you know, visiting Cape Cod without an automobile and really be, you know, independent of a private automobile. They talk about increased train service, or at least a weekend service down to the Hyannis Transportation Center, or the downtown area, I should say. So there seems to be a lot of leg for that.
So how might that look, Glenn, without the Yamath Road corridor piece?
Yeah, I don't want to put that in the spot. Yeah, you know, you know, because we're quite, I'm quite sure right now, I'll tell you right now, because like I say, it does have a lot of leg. I think we're going to go through this process and see how the preferred alternatives come out, and to see how that multi-use path works with all of them. And right now, actually, kind of the feeling, I think, for being out in the public so often, is that we will have a concept that moves forward, and that concept will have a multi-use path in it. I could, yeah, I can safely say that. There's a lot of new law support for it, actually. And very little leg in it, which is kind of rare.
Anything else?
I think that you should be congratulated for reaching out to the public.
Absolutely.
At the time, I know that this should put to rest, again, the concept that the Cape Cod Commission is not an organization that isn't encouraging public participation. I would encourage the public to participate. You've been invited, you know, show up.
Yeah.
People who show up are the ones who show up.
Well, I, thank you. The only thing I'd say, is I know I'm a figurehead, and I get to speak at all these things, they tag me with that, but I have a great team behind me, I'll tell you that, I have a lot of people who work behind the scenes and put all this together. They do most, if not all, the work, and Glenn just tells them. Yeah.
That's nice.
It is a good project team, though, I'll say that much.
Well, you know, I think the other thing about it too is, I mean, I think language always has a lot to do with people's response to things. When you use the term charrette, it's a concept that people, most people are not aware of. And then when you define it in that sense, it helps people really realize that they have a part in this, and there is a role for them, and you outline that. And I think people might, people tend to look at it a little differently, because they come with a little positive view of discussing something, rather than just, oh, it's another public meeting, it has a purpose, and it fits into a process.
Yeah.
So I think that's, I think you ought to keep on doing that charrette thing.
Yeah, we will. I think, I think moving forward, you know, you'll see this type of effort when almost all the projects seem happening, because, you know, it's such a, it's such a big effort, and there's so many impacts on a roadway project. It really comes down to, and, you know, certainly this one too. One thing we're working with, we had great cooperation with the town of Barnstable and their planning department, because one of the concerns that we always have is transportation engineers, is as soon as you build a roadway, if the zoning allows it, those businesses will move in along that roadway, and there'll be congestion along the roadway. So you have a brand-new, you know, capacity that people have been waiting years for, and that capacity is used up by the businesses that take it, you know, that have the turn movements in front along that, along the roadway, so you don't get the benefit from it. But in this case, where the zoning isn't placed, we don't see those large retail components coming along here. You know, the town also has a lot of concerns, they have their wealth fields in this area, they really don't want to see that type of development in this area. So it seems to be a good fit where, you know, again, you kind of hate to see roadway capacity getting put in, and then five years later, you're sitting on the roadway, you're gesturing, you're like, what do we do here? I think this is a project that has legs, it could last for years, and provide, you know, a nice access component to downtown Hyannis. I think it's what downtown Hyannis really needs. You know, it's kind of the regional policy plan setup, you have the, your node, and then once you're out of the node, you get to go home. You know, sit in traffic bumper-to-bumper for an hour.
One other question, when you work with the towns, Barnstable, Yamath, and that, do you consider in the future planning curbs or no curb cuts, things of that sort?
We will discuss it as we get further along into it, but it's very hard to regulate where those curb cuts would be.
I think the towns could do that.
Yeah, they could, and we have those discussions with them. Again, I think if you saw the existing businesses on the west side of Yamath Road, if you came up with a concept that left those businesses, we'd have to address the curb cuts along that roadway. Some of them don't have curbs.
I was going to say, they're stretched, so there are no.
Their parking lot is, you know, literally the entire length of their property, and, you know, you're never going to get congestion relief if you have people backing up into the roadway from their parking lots into there. You have to have organization within their parking lots itself.
Great work that you did, really.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a lot of work, and I know Lev is here, and he's part of your team.
Yeah, Lev's definitely a big part of the team, along with many others, I'll tell you right now, along with many others.
Another short story on Dennis, they, I think they had over 100 people near the local.
Yes, they did for the Dennis board, yeah. I checked one of those, that was the last one, yeah, it was an excellent one. Great participation there.
So Cape Cod Commission's making great progress to become even more user-friendly.
Yeah. People come out a little more for their neighborhood than they do for their roadways. We're going to them, you know, we're going to them.
That's good, that's good. Well, thank you. It's mind-boggling, all of the details you have to kind of put together and consider, but it's a lot of work, and thank you, and thank your team.
Well, thank you.
It's great, we look forward to hearing more. Okay, we have to move along here, because I think there's a meeting at 9:30 here.
It should be done by then.
Okay. All right.
I would move the, was it the need to action?
Second. All in favor? Aye. So done. And, Mark?
I just have a couple of things for you. Paul sent along CD copies of his goal presentation from last week. So there's a copy for each of you. I do have some stuff for the, to read, if you want to slip that in the to-read folder or pass the to-read folder down. And I got a letter, I haven't had a chance to read, it was just in my mail today. It is from the Barnstable County Shellfish Advisory Committee, and I believe, it's coming, it's from Conrad Kaya, who's the chairman, and I believe it is asking you to continue funding the Shellfish Propagation Program that we have. They are concerned they're not going to get any money from the state, they didn't get any money this year, and so they're asking for $50,000 to $75,000 to continue that. I think we have $25,000 actually with this year's budget, so we'll have to keep that in line for our budget, the process, and then.
You can put the actual, you know.
No, you don't need any, but, no, it's for $2,000, FYI, $2,011. And I just wanted to remind you of a couple of things. We have the fire chiefs meeting next Thursday, 22nd at 9 o'clock at Fire Training Academy, a week from Saturday, on Saturday, October 24th, at 11 o'clock, if you remember, they're having the Fire Academy Award Ceremony, also at the Fire Training Academy, you've been invited. And then finally, and I'm telling you all this for next week, because next Wednesday, I'm not here, as you know, I'm at the Macris Conference, I think you're going to be here at that time. But next Friday is the ADA training at the Dennis Church of the Nazareth.
Yes.
I believe I'll sign up.
23rd, did you say that?
That's the 23rd on Friday, yeah.
23rd. Okay, and you are meeting with Bob Troy this week?
I am meeting with Bob on Thursday, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, on Thursday, what time?
I'm going to be there at 2:30.
At his office you're meeting? Where is that? I think I can do it.
It's in Sandwich, at the Sexton Hill on his block.
I saw Bill's comments.
Yeah, I have comments to come, I have them.
Okay, and I will as well.
By the end of the day, so. Tell me again, October 23rd, is it disability?
Disabilities.
ADA training.
ADA training.
And are we signed up for that?
You are signed up.
Okay. And also then the following week, on the 30th, is our ethics training.
And then our ethics training.
I already had mine, by the way.
I know you have. This makes you so ethical.
No, and I said, right, exactly.
What time is it?
Tentacle, 10:00.
Time is that ADA?
I believe it's 6:00.
9:00.
In terms of content, that's the conflict emotional zone.
That is.
Have you made any, has it been any progress in looking at the open meeting?
I have not yet done that, and I will this week. I will get a final date and get that together, so.
You know, Bill, when you mentioned that you took the ethics training online?
Yes.
Actually, that's what they're proposing, when you read that letter.
They're requiring.
Requiring, exactly.
Well, that's, you know, it's a Skinner box kind of a thing, you can't get it wrong, because if you get the wrong answer, they just redirect you, you know, to answer again, again, again. It takes about 15 minutes to go through.
One thing I wanted to bring up, now that we've gone through, we just went through goals and looking forward with Mr. Nedzwicki, I was thinking, you have yours, do you not, you have your reviews that come up?
Yes.
Maybe you might want to follow that same concept of giving us your projections and goals and that sort of thing, and we can go through.
You mean for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah. Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
That would be good, and that would be good for all of us as far as getting our agendas forward. So maybe in a couple of weeks, we could do that. Also, Kathy?
Yeah, I, just the timing, no, in a couple of weeks that will not happen.
You couldn't do that, okay.
No. I'm not here next week, on the 28th, we have two things. You have Andrew coming back in to talk about the review committee.
That's right.
And I just want to finalize the budget piece, because I need to get that done.
Right.
And I won't be able to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
If I get it done by the 28th, I'll be able to do it right now.
All right.
Just because of my time, so.
All right, so put that on your list of things, yes, and then we'll put a date on that.
Summer's night November 6th, was it change to change? We couldn't eat the Giamati or Giannati, we couldn't do it.
That's right. That's right.
Back to the 30th?
Yes. Kathy Q., as I call her, she's out of the DA's office. I think I sent you a message a couple of weeks ago, that she is with the youth diversion program out of the Assistant District Attorney, I mean, of the District Attorney's Office. She would like to come before us with Steve Brown and talk about the youth programs that they are doing.
Sure, yeah. Do you want to do that next week, maybe? That would be a good...
If they can get here next week, that would be great.
We're meeting at 12:30, right?
And if we have to move that up to 12, just to put that up there, that may be a...
Yeah, I don't think we, we haven't set the time.
I have 1 o'clock, too.
So don't you want to make it dependent on when she can come?
Let's do that.
Okay. Well, let's say 1 for now, and if it changes, I'll have...
We can still do 12, everyone, if she has to, or 12:30.
It should be only 12:30, we're having trouble, but I do have that seat at the first meeting with the IPA Board.
Okay.
Move it back to 12:30?
Well, let's see.
That's a possibility.
What time that she can come in.
Um, I think I just signed the wrong, you have to point me out on one of these. Sorry. Um, is there anything else?
There's an energy forum tomorrow in Harwich, at 1 o'clock at Community Center. And tomorrow morning, is it noon, maybe it's Friday morning, you're, you're starting the Peace Week stuff that's been publicized in the paper.